I drive stuff. They all started laughing.
2022 Board Meeting. First, we're going to ask you, well, first, we have a bit of sad news. We lost another family member this week. Dee Beers, who was a special education teacher at Steeplechase, passed away earlier this week, and so we would like to pass on our condolences to her and her family, to the Steeplechase family. She has been in a number of our schools, and so I know that was felt deeply across our entire district. We're going to begin with the National Anthem, so if I can ask you all to stand, and we will hear, watch a video from Camp Ernst Middle School. If you please remain standing, we will have the Pledge to the Flag from the students of Florence Elementary. My goodness, they are adorable. I do need to make note that we do have two board members who are not present this evening. Ms. Karen Bird, who had surgery last week, so she is recovering, so we send our well wishes to her. And Dr. Maria Brown is not present this evening. She is having to not only clone herself, but also triple and quadruple herself tonight, because she has four children who have activities all over the place and is being a mom tonight. So that's what she needs to do. Now, I'm going to turn it over to our Student Board Member Representative, Ms. Aleah McCowen.
Thank you. Um, once again, very sad that we have to make another announcement, but I want to second what was said earlier. Please send your prayers and just your care to the Steeplechase family and to the family of the teacher who is lost. Being that Ignite lost one of our own last month, our family knows, our Ignite family knows how it feels. So absolutely, we reach our arms out to you. Um, I don't have anything additional to report in the way of the Superintendent Student Advisory Council, given that our celebration was directly preceding last month's meeting. Um, I do hope all the students are doing well. I've checked in a little bit with some of the students since then, and they seem to be very excited for the end of the school year. So, once again, they were all phenomenal to work with. I'm so excited to see what they do in the future. Um, so that being said, I'm just going to comment a little bit on what I've seen with the student body in relations to how they're feeling about the end of the year, because I know we're all very, very excited about that. Um, so I know my fellow seniors are absolutely buzzing with excitement. I know, I've noticed that they seem to feel generally pretty prepared for what comes next. Obviously, there are some areas for adulthood that you're never quite ready to step into, but I know that so many are feeling at least as ready as they can and are excited to get the chance to do graduation in person. And I know we were all very excited to do prom in person. So that's definitely, all of our seniors are definitely very excited for that. Um, all of the students from around the county that I've talked to have seemed very excited to end their year. I know a lot of them seem to be doing better with being able to socialize with their friends, one-on-one. It's been, just, the energy has been great. Um, and finally, I just, once again, want to thank the Board for giving me the opportunity to speak here at these Board Meetings. Um, and I'm, absolutely, I'm excited to move on to new opportunities, but I am very much going to miss my experiences here at Boone County Schools. Um, please continue this as much as possible. This was a great opportunity for me, and it was a great opportunity for the students who got the chance to participate in student leadership. Um, and that's really all I can ask as my time closes out here. And to the community, please continue to support your students throughout any highs and lows that they may have, and please continue supporting their individuality and their strengths for everyone that you care for, everyone that you meet. And that individuality and that intelligence is going to change the world. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCowen. And then, and I completely agree, your generation is going to change the world. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Turner for the good news.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our next good news item is our Student School Board Recognition. So for Mrs. McEwen. The School Board would like to recognize Elena McEwen for her Year of Service as a Student School Board Member Representative. Elena, you've done an outstanding job being on this Leadership Committee and this Council, leading our students. We're confident in all of those experiences that you have. They'll benefit you in your future endeavors. You're just a great leader. I've been so impressed, and just, I just love what you've done this year. You have just really clear insight into a great part of life that many, many students your age may not quite be at that point. So you have such an insight about you, and such an obvious care and compassion for all the students and everybody around. So thank you very much. Let's recognize formally Elena McEwen.
Our next good news item is Break the Mold. May's Break the Mold winner is math teacher Michael Piercy of Jones Middle School. But it's not just about the numbers for Mr. Piercy. He's involved in so many other things at Jones to support the students, and you'll have to see for yourself.
Everybody was participating together, and it was really awesome.
When we're doing decimals, he said, he made a reference to when his fish died, so it like floated to the top of his bowl or something.
So we were dividing decimals, and we talked about how the division houses the fishbowl, and at the end of the problem, the problem is over, and the decimal is the fish. And at the end of the fish's life, where does it go? It floats to the top. So it was just a simple way for them to remember, my problem is over, my decimal needs to go straight up.
That's definitely breaking out of the mold of teaching math. Mr. Michael Piercy teaches sixth grade math at Jones Middle School. That includes algebra, geometry, ratios, proportions, and just basic problem solving.
He's not just coming in here to get the job done. You can tell through his interactions with the students, observations in the classroom. You know, he's working on both the written and the hidden curriculum. You know, he is working on the whole child, looking at all the ESO components.
He's really good at teaching, but he makes it fun and engaging. He's an amazing teacher, and he helps a lot of students. He lets me study for a test and help me learn new things.
He's frequently supporting kids during lunch, either with math problems, or you can just tell he's pulling someone after class to check in. He definitely knows his kids and where they're at, and he wants to make sure they're having the best day possible, wants to make sure they're understanding their work, whether it's his class or somebody else's.
Mr. Piercy has more than just math class on his plate. He serves as the sixth grade team lead, academic team coach, and an ESS instructor. At one time, he was also math department chair and an active teacher ambassador. Oh, while he works on his EL endorsement after school. To hear him tell it, it's just another day.
It's a cohort with Boone County Schools and NCU, and there are 10 of us here at Jones going for the ESO endorsement. And even though it's an online program, I feel so much more connected as if I was like taking these classes in person, because there's 10 of us, and we're constantly discussing it every single week.
Mr. Piercy actually has the nickname the last few years as Positive Piercy. He always has a smile on his face, walks the highways, greets the students by name, same with the staff. Walking into his classrooms, students are fully engaged and open to work.
Positive Piercy is the real deal and easily gives away credit to others for all that he is and all that he has been allowed to do.
I wouldn't be where I am without the other people around me. So, I mean, my wife and I couldn't do everything I do here without her. Here at school, Ms. Watson, she's a very big part of helping, like, with the curriculum, making sure where we need to be. Um, Dr. Hickey is extremely supportive administrator. And then just everybody that I work with, they're just an awesome team to work with. So it's not really for me, it's like kind of for the school.
Rumor has it, the day is not complete without some sarcastic humor from Positive Piercy, designed especially for his professional peers.
He was very happy that he would have several of us saying positive things on camera so we could keep putting it back in our faces.
Congratulations for breaking the mold, Mr. Piercy.
Congratulations, Piercy. We're so happy for you.
Congratulations for breaking the mold, Mr. Piercy, and you're an amazing teacher.
Congratulations, Mr. Piercy, on your break the mold award. We are so proud of you.
Do you have anything you'd like to say? Good news item number three. The following students and staff were recognized in April for their dedication and excellence in education during the Northern Kentucky Excellence in Education Dinner and Awards Celebration, which was put on by the Northern Kentucky Education Council. Congratulations to the following people. Career and Technical Academic All-Star Renee Kopser of Ryle High School. Student Leadership Honoree Elena McEwen of Ignite Institute. Academic All-Star Austin Mills of Cooper High School. St. Elizabeth Scholarship Recipients Mary Kay Burtzel of Cooper High School, Kirsten Goddard of Ryle High School, Madison Melvin of Ryle High School, and Courtney Rudolph of Ryle High School. Also, Boone County's Golden Apple Teacher Award went to Timothy Mitchell of Thornwild Elementary. Good news item number four. The Florence Rotary Club recognized two Boone County teachers as Teacher of the Year recipients. Each teacher received $250 to donate to an education charity of their choice, and citations from the Kentucky Senate and House of Representatives, a Boone County Proclamation naming that date as Those Teachers' Day, and the Kentucky Colonel Award. Congratulations to Michelle Rowland of Urban Beck Elementary School and Lauren Jane of Cooper High School.
And our next good news items. Achieving Excellence Together Award. We are really pleased to give a special recognition to Wild Health. Wild Health is the partner organization that provided Boone County Schools, students, staff, and families in the community free COVID testing and vaccinations at school and other easy access locations during the pandemic. They worked tirelessly to help us protect our students, their health, and their work helped us to keep in-person learning going. For that, we would like to honor Wild Health with our Achieving Excellence Together Award. Would you come forward? Happy Nurses Week. We are so happy, and that we want to acknowledge the difficult but dedicated work of our school nurses. School nursing has evolved dramatically since COVID-19 hit. School nurses break down the barriers to good health. They are the gateway to a healthy education. They see to it that students who have never been to a physician, optician, or mental health provider are referred for services. They triage real medical emergencies every day. They can range from life-threatening seizures and astmas, allergies, to name a few. Even the Band-Aids sometimes need to be triaged. Nurses do the things we do not see every day to keep our students, staff, and staff healthy, and our schools able to have classrooms full of healthy students. Please step forward as I call your name. Boone County High School, Kristy Webb. Connor High School, Shelley Walters. Cooper High School, Debbie Welch and Laura Pate. Ryle High School, Yvonne Valare. Ignite and Yalie, Noelle Stoner. Rise Academy and Florence Elementary, Acacia Brinkman. Our middle school nurses, Bally Shannon Middle, Whitney Tate. Connor Middle, Lisa Schmidt. Camp Ernst Middle, Trina Barnes. Gray Middle, Angelia Campbell. Ockerman Middle, Amy Schroeder. And Jones Middle, Allison Coleman. And Jones Middle, Allison Coleman.
Serving these elementary schools. Burlington and Kelly Elementary Schools, Stacy Weber. Collins Elementary School, Stephanie Morris. Urban Beck Elementary, Amy Lind. Goodridge Elementary, Amy Everett. Long Branch Elementary, Carol Dwyer. New Haven Elementary, Lori LaShavo. North Point and Thornwild Elementary Schools, Kelly Byes. Ockerman Elementary School, Amber Lee. Mann Elementary School, Tracy Bright. Steeplechase Elementary, Seneca Sheldon. Stevens Elementary, Jenny Andreas. And last but not least, these nurses are supervised by Director of Health Services Registered Nurse, Jennifer Yarker.
And our next good news items. School Resource Officer Appreciation. Next week is National Police Week. It starts with National Peace Officers' Day on Sunday, the 15th. Tonight, we would like to acknowledge and especially thank all of our resource officers from the Boone County Sheriff's Department. We want all of you to know we have a deep appreciation for each of you and we understand the sacrifices you make to keep our schools and communities safe. Thank you. Please step forward as we call your name. From Boone County High School, Deputy Bart White. From Connor High School, Deputy Ken Bircham. From Cooper High School, Deputy Wayne Turner. Ryle High School, Deputy Adam Coleman. Ignite Institute Deputy Charlie Ralston. From Rise Academy, Deputy Kevin Gilpin. Walton Verona High School Deputy Joe Gregory. From Bally Shannon Middle School Deputy Mark Jump. From Connor Middle Deputy Mike Deener. And from Camp Ernst Middle School Deputy Chad Riddell. From Gray Middle School Deputy Brad Azell. From Ockerman Middle School Deputy Chris Saunders. And from Jones Middle School Deputy Kevin Schwartz.
From our elementary schools. Burlington Elementary Deputy Roger Nelms. Collins Elementary School Deputy Troy Hagadorn. Urban Beck Elementary Deputy Jeremy Reed. Florence Elementary Deputy Chris Combs. Goodridge Elementary Deputy Dave Harold. Long Branch Elementary Deputy Ben Buher. Kelly Elementary Deputy Dean Patterson. New Haven Elementary Deputy Scott Schwartz. North Point, I'm sorry. Yeah, North Point Elementary Deputy Mike Kappas. Ockerman Elementary Deputy Derek Boyd. Mann Elementary Deputy Mike Bales. Steeplechase Elementary Deputy Ryan Strange. Stevens Elementary Deputy Jim Hill. Thornwild Elementary Deputy Scott Donow. Walton Verona Elementary Deputy Tony Trimble. And Yalie Elementary Deputy Vic Lavender. Also, last but not least, these great SROs are supervised by Lieutenant Ryan Walters, who you all get to see here every school board meeting. All right, we love our SROs. So moving forward with our next good news item is our Aspiring Administrator Academy for the school year. Our school district's Aspiring Administrator Academy provides the knowledge and skill sets to prepare participants for entering a leadership role. With the program, cohort members gain the tools, frameworks, and leadership techniques needed to begin a successful transition into a leadership role at the building level. These participants volunteered their time for 12 hours to learn and grow, both virtually and in person during this school year. As Boone County Schools values growing from within and creating a pipeline of highly effective leaders, we congratulate 23 of our 21, 22 graduates from this year's Aspiring Administrator Academy. So we have about seven cohort members here tonight out of the 23. So we're going to call your name. When we call your name, please come forward. Congratulations Wendy Faulkner. Wendy is from Camp Ernst Middle School. Next, Lisa Burlington from Gray Middle School. Shannon Ketron from Connor High School. Dustin Caudell from Ryle High School. Robin Schaefer from Ockerman Elementary. Courtney Pitts, also from Ockerman Elementary. And Elizabeth Derrickson from North Point Elementary. Thank you all for all your hard work this year. Our next good news is congratulations Ignite Institute Head Custodian, Mike Johnson, for winning the Kentucky Education Association. What, huh? Oh. Okay, we'll try this again. Congratulations to Ignite Institute Head Custodian, Mike Johnson, for winning the Kentucky Education Association Education Support Professional of the Year Award. Congratulations. Come on up, Mike. Where are you?
Good evening. I'd like to talk about some bus drivers for a while. Driving a bus is a very tough job. Collectively, our drivers put out 2.5 million-plus miles on an average school year. And to do that, they have to face all the distractions you might imagine moving a big vehicle through the county, both outside and sometimes inside the bus. I'm here very proud to be able to recognize a group of drivers who have shown incredible professionalism and safety over the years. We have a number of awards. I'd like someone to kind of help me hand those out if we could. And I'd like to start with a five-year safety awards.
Yes, yes.
There in the order that they're coming. So as we call your name, please come up and be recognized. Cynthia Mays. Dan Statmiller. Don Elliott. James Sedenga. Judy Green. And Mr. Kenneth Sherman. Last but not least, Tammy White. All of these individuals have safely done their job for five years accident-free, which is pretty amazing when you think about it. Now, I'd like to add to that, we have a winner of a 15-year safety award. I'd like Mrs. Elaine Robinson to come on up. That's truly amazing. Thank you, Elaine. And it continues. We have someone with a 20-year award. Now, this individual isn't here. I'm going to read his name for the record, but Pat Rosel is coaching a baseball game, believe it or not. If anybody knows him, you know that's what he does. But he has also driven safely for 20-plus years here in Boone County. And last but not least, I have someone that even beats Pat's record. Pam Duncan, come on down for 25 years of perfect driving. This is Pam's last year. This is her 26th year with the department. And with five days to go, I don't want to jinx her, but she's still on track for a perfect record. All right, I want to thank all these guys for their professionalism and safety, taking our students to and from school every day. Thank you.
And for our final good news item tonight. If you were asked to describe who we serve, what do you think you would say? You might be confident and are able to answer the question through your own environmental observations and experiences. Seeing your community through your eyes is not necessarily seeing the whole picture. During the school year and beyond, we will be exploring who we serve from multiple perspectives. This month, we celebrate National School Lunch Hero Day. We hope through these videos, you will learn new things and discover there's more to who we serve in Boone County Schools.
First and foremost, it's about food, safety, and food quality, and great customer service. What's different is we are able to offer so many different options now, especially with allergies, religious beliefs. So we have gluten-free and lactose-free. We've got soy milk.
Probably one of the most important parts of our job is the production records. We have to keep records of everything that we serve for the government. So every piece of apple, every milk carton that goes out, they want to know where it's going.
There are some kids that take everything on the line every day, no matter what it is, and you don't know why. But you know, you suspect maybe they're not getting as much at home, so they're eating as much as they can at school.
Especially on Monday mornings for breakfast. It's the child that comes through and they want everything for breakfast. And they scarf it down and they're asking for seconds or they're asking for things off of other children's trays. It is heartbreaking.
We've had students in the past, I know, I've seen her every day, like putting her apple and stuff in her bag. And you know, she would come and ask for a bag and she'd be like, I'm going to take it home to my siblings.
Because of Oakbrook, a lot of people think that they're, you know, most of the kids here have money and there's not issues, but that would probably be one of the biggest misconceptions.
I think what's tough in the bill to remove the barrier, I think one of the barriers is the food insecurity.
One of the good trainee women says, I get a free meal. I get my meals free, right? And the little girl says, why don't I get my meals? How can lunches be free? Free for them. Then everybody's all the same.
Food insecurities don't discriminate. They could be in wealthy, different religions, or ethnicities. I think the biggest difficulty here is a language barrier. Some students have come that keep speaking English. For us to explain to them, you know, actually what their name is, like they don't even know enough to know their name. And so that is really difficult when they come through and we're trying to explain to them what they're eating.
We have a lot of students who, you know, come to us and will say, you know, thank you for this Thanksgiving dinner because...
you for this Thanksgiving dinner because if it wasn't for you guys, I wouldn't receive one." Like, that's probably the most saddest part of it.
He just made a beeline for me and said, "The cafeteria ladies are making my lunch to go, so I get to have my turkey day." And that made our day happy kids. They come in happy.
I love my job. The kids. I love the kids, the hustle, the bustle, you know, seeing them that few seconds of the day and, you know, not having the pressure of the test that they have to take or, you know, and getting to talk to them, just that few seconds as a person, you know? How was your football game? How was your play?
I have one cashier that can tell you every child's name in the school.
I love my job. I love it. I love serving the kids, my employees, the staff here. It's just a great place to come to. On a side note, if I were to recruit anyone out there, we do not work nights, we do not work weekends, we do not work holidays, we have a fall, winter, and spring break, and it's a great opportunity for those people wanting to get back in the workplace that have students maybe starting school.
I'm Jody Artino, Cafeteria Manager at North Point Elementary, and this is who we serve.
Todd at the Bind, a Food Service Manager at Collins Elementary, and this is who we serve.
I am Diana Avi, Cafeteria Manager at Goodridge Elementary, and this is who we serve.
I'm Karen Velosky, Cafeteria Manager at Stevens Elementary, and this is who we serve.
I'm Angela Simpson, the Cafeteria Manager at Boone County High School, and this is who we serve.
Madam Chair, that concludes all of our good news items. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. We will now move to Item Six, Audience of Citizens, portion of the meeting. And of course, I need to read a statement. Yes, if you were just here for the good news items and would like to leave, you could go ahead and leave. Okay, as always, I need to read a statement before we head into the audience decisions. "The Board welcomes the opportunity to hear from the community and inform the Board of your views on matters before the Board. Please keep in mind, the Board of Education agenda is set, and by statute, the Board can only discuss the items that are present on the agenda. The Board cannot legally, nor would the Board, discuss an issue specific to an employee or student in respect to privacy. Reminder, the meetings are streamlined on YouTube. Please be respectful in your comments. If you have a concern that you would like a response from the administration, feel free to leave your information as directed," which I believe it's Mr. Ball? Yes, he has a clipboard over there. You can leave your information. "Please keep comments to two minutes so that all that wish to speak may speak." And tonight, we only have one person signed up, Charity Holinka. Did I say that name right? Okay, come on forward, Charity.
Well, after that great exodus, you know, I was kind of nervous, kind of talked to this whole group, but now. So my name is Charity Holinka. I have the privilege of being in this school district for the last four years. I have an 11-year-old who is currently a fifth grader, and a 13-year-old is currently a seventh grader. And even though it's kind of nice to not have to talk to all the people that were in this room, my comments are actually continuation of good news and continuation of Elena, like you were saying about individuality. I would actually like to recognize my school of New Haven for some amazing work that they have done over the last four years. And I actually had a whole speech that I had planned to talk to you about, but my daughter actually was trying to do a competition. She's a little competitive. But they have a competition at New Haven on trying to win the banner for the year that they graduate, and so they needed to write a letter to their principal, Ms. Goble, to explain why they should win this banner. And I think her letter probably says it the best, so I'm going to read it. "Dear Ms. Goble, I would greatly appreciate it if I was nominated for the banner that shows what year we graduate from high school, or at least be a runner-up. I really think I deserve it because I've been here since I was six, all the way to 11. And this place is really like home, education-wise, because over the years I've been here, I've had teachers that have been helping me along the way. What really helps is that Ms. Dowey and Ms. England were both really concerned for me because they saw that I was not progressing as much as the other kids. So they told me that I might have dyslexia and my mom should get me checked out. And my mom did because she trusted these ladies and she knew that they were just looking out for her best intentions. So we went to the test and we found out that I had dyslexia and dysgraphia, and then bam, we had Team Kaylee. Or that's what my mom calls it, at least. From here on out, all the people who had me through the years were going to have a special place on Team Kaylee. So over the years, when I've gotten bigger, I've gotten to get new teachers, and every year, they've gotten better than the last. And I still remember this one memory that hopefully I will remember for the rest of my life. One day, I was walking in Ms. Powers' room and I saw this one book. She taught me that my differences are actually a superpower. That made a big impact on me for hopefully my whole life. Then Ms. Powers showed it to my mom, and she thought that that was a brilliant way to lift my spirits. So I'm very thankful that there are people out there who are looking out for me and have the best intentions looking out for me. I know that when we move to Wisconsin, there will be no special education team as good as New Haven does it. I know this because in third grade, I went to Springer for dyslexia, and I knew that this was not the same learning as what I was used to. What I'm used to is all the teachers and mom working together to help me, hence the name Team Kaylee. So when fourth grade was going to roll around, I knew that mom needed to get me back into New Haven, and she did. And when my first day walking back in New Haven, it felt like you guys were here with open arms again. I didn't feel like I didn't belong. I knew that this is where I was supposed to be. So I will always remember New Haven because of these things and always the saying that my teachers and my helpers and now my mom says, "She will do amazing things." So that's what I think. And my last reason, a little reason, I think that the banner will show that people who have doubted me are just wrong. And if I feel like I can't do it anymore, I'll remember that there was a whole team of people who were trying to make it the best that they could be for my high school and my whole life. There will be no other Team Kaylee, like the OG Team Kaylee. Team Kaylee is Ms. Dowey, Ms. Powers, Ms. Hartman, Ms. England, Ms. Bradbury, Ms. Goble, and then my OT, Ms. Nab, Ms. Cyborg, Ms. Loneman. Thank you. And of course, my friends who have helped me along the way, and my family who has cheered me on and will keep on cheering me on for my whole life. Love, Kaylee Holinka." So I just want to recognize this school because if you can imagine, my daughter has pretty severe dyslexia and dysgraphia. She cannot write this in print, right? She can't do that. But she learns 100% everything from a verbal standpoint, and no one changed this letter. She read it to her special ed teacher and she typed it as she was told. That's pretty incredible. So that's pretty incredible from the education team that supported her. I don't know that you know about Springer, but Springer is an extremely expensive private school that I probably even had people in this school district tell me, you know, you can get Boone County to pay for that. Sure, I could do that. I could have fought all of the battles that we needed to battle, but that wasn't part of Team Kaylee. The hospital where she got so sick, where she probably got this dyslexia and dysgraphia from, immediately told me that I was part of a medical team called Team Kaylee, and I needed to work on this team for six weeks to help hopefully bring home a child that was still alive. And we did that. And I will say that as a part of her medical team, I'm an accountant, so I have no background in medical, but I did make a difference on that team. And Team Kaylee as part of this school, it has shown that even when you go to a very expensive private school that specializes in this 100%, it might not be the best answer. The best answer is usually when we team together and we work together from a community, a parent, a teacher, and like you said, Elena, the individuality of that person. So I hope that encourages the entire school district of Boone County to be, stand up and really look at these types of situations and look at them as a Team Kaylee. As that when I was in my last IEP meeting, you know, I had to thank my team for doing that, and the teachers said, "You know what? I think we're going to start every IEP meeting with Team whoever." And I said, "You know what? I think that'd actually be a really good idea because I hear from parents very different experiences than what I've experienced." And I always ask them, "Did you team with them or are you fighting with them?" And so I definitely think teaming goes a long way. And yes, we are moving to Wisconsin, so sadly, we will be leaving Boone County schools. But I went and toured 10 schools to figure out our new school district. And three of the schools, when they heard about the experience, because they got very long interviews, they said, "We want to be part of Team Kaylee. That sounds like an amazing school that you have, and I hope we can live up to that standard." So congratulations, Boone County, but definitely congratulations to New Haven Elementary.
Charity, thank you so, so much for sharing that with us. Wow, that was very, very powerful, and we wish you the best of luck in Wisconsin. We'll miss you here. Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item Seven, Recommended Action Consent Items A through EE. Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I recommend the Board to approve the Recommended Action Consent Agenda Items A through EEE as presented with the Treasures Report presented by Mrs. Linda Shield.
Okay. We began the month with an adjusted cash balance of $70,604,854. Total revenues were $8,079,352. Our expenditures were $18,092,500. We had a net decrease in cash for the month of $10,013,149. That leaves us an ending cash balance of $60,591,705. Just a couple of comments. Our ending cash balance is actually about 2.1 million higher than the level a year ago. But there are some factors that are impacting that, and one of those factors is a timing difference in the collection of utilities tax, which is accounting for about 1.7 million of that. In the next couple of months, I expect that timing difference to be factored out. A significant amount of omitted property taxes were received this much. This month, it was $576,000, but that brings our total omitted taxes received for the year of up to 1.2 million. Now, we haven't received that high of an amount of omitted taxes since 2010, so that is very significant. We, let me see, our occupational license taxes, we received just short of $1 million. We are still seeing a lag in the collection of those taxes. It's not a huge lag, but we're continuing to monitor this source of revenues. Now, we talked about the cash balance being higher, but I want you all to remember that we did start out with a very healthy cash carryover at the beginning of the year because of the COVID impact on our operations last year. We were not spending at the normal levels last year, so we had a little bit higher cash carryover balance. And what I noted is when I compared the net increase in cash, and at this time of year, there's still a net increase because we collected, by January, February, we collect about 98% of our property taxes, so we're still, you know, have more revenues for the year than expenses, but that will quickly deplete in these next few months. But the net increase is about 3.7 lower than last year, which means our expenditure level is increasing faster than our revenue level. All right, we paid $5.1 million in debt service, and I wanted to make just a couple comments about those grants we received for responding to COVID and where you have just a little bit left to spend in that first group called, referred to as the SRR1. And those funds were primarily used for responding to COVID, the technology for the virtual learning, the mitigation and response PPE expenses, et cetera. So the second group of grants referred to as SRR2 have to be spent a little bit more than a year from now. And most, those expenditure plans have been led by the principals who have identified specific needs. A lot of those needs referring to SEL and the grant is called Learning Loss. The grant was intended to minimize the learning loss that occurred during COVID. And the final group of grants referred to as SRR3, the spending is just getting started for those. Those funds have to be spent by 2024. So I can, I know that was a lot of information tonight. I've provided the usual comparative reports. I'll be happy to address any questions that you have.
Does anyone have any questions for Mrs. Shield?
Just on the SRR2, when the state set aside, looks like there's $1.1 million there. Is that, has that been allocated to projects by the principals?
I, yes, I believe so. Hold on, I'm sorry. I'm trying to identify.
So middle, SRR2, SRR2 states set aside, column on the right, under available.
Yeah. I might have to defer to Jenny, maybe. Are, do you, can you identify specifically what that is earmarked for? Oh, okay, Jim. Okay.
So that's money that hasn't been allocated. The digital learning coaches and other expenditures that were for positions at the time were temporary in nature. Do you foresee any of that $1.1 million that's set aside to continue some of that work?
I think we have to have conversations. There's a work committee that I don't believe there's been any discussion at that level yet.
And then what's the timeframe on SRR, ARP SRR?
ARP SRR is, has to be spent by 2024.
Mr. Parks, just so you know, I've discussed with Mr. Turner. At the next meeting during the superintendent's report, I requested a presentation on the SRR funding, the expenditures, the plans and things, so we get an update on that.
That'd be nice. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions for Mrs. Shield or, let's see? Actually, we need to move forward with the motion. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Items A through EE as recommended? Okay, Mr. Collins, do I have a second? Mr. Parks? Okay, now we move into any further discussion on the rest of the Consent Agenda Items. Do we have any questions on any of the other items? We good? Oh, okay. Seeing that there's no further discussion, we'll move forward with a vote. All in favor of approving the Consent Agenda Items, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None opposed? Passes. All in favor. This is kind of weird just having the three of us here. Okay, we will move forward the meeting, the Agenda Item Number Eight, Recommended Action Old Business. Seeing no old business on the agenda, we will move to Item Number Nine. We will move to Agenda Item Nine, Recommended Action New Business, Item A. Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I recommend the Board to approve-
I recommend the Board to approve the Recommended Action New Business, Item A, the tentative working budget, and, and also comments later from those members of the Board that are here that are on the Budget Committee.
Do I have a motion to approve the new business, Agenda Item A, tentative working budget as recommended? Mr. Collins, second? Mr. Parks? Okay, now we move into discussion questions on this. Mr. Turner? Do you have comments?
No, no, no comments.
Mrs. Shield, do you have any comments on the tentative budget? No, not at this point. I'll be happy to address any questions. Do we have any questions? It is, we did have to present a, a budget that is imbalanced, though, at, at this point, and to, to make, to get that budget imbalanced, we did reduce the contingency down to a three and a half percent level. We did have to take purchase of buses out of the, that budget, too, just to, to get it to balance. But we are still getting additional information, and the, what's coming up is the levying of the tax rate. So we will prepare our final working budget in this August, September timeframe. Does this tentative budget include any assumptions on that tax rate? Yes, this does include the presumption that the Board will levy the highest tax rate that's allowed. Okay, so. And this budget is referred to as the tentative budget because we have to have a budget in place as of July 1, when we have a new year, even though we haven't levied the tax rates yet. So to make this clear, to balance this budget, we're making an assumption there's going to be a four percent increase, and we had to reduce our contingency. Is it, the KDE state recommended is five percent, which is what we typically try to have, but we've reduced that down to three and a half percent to balance the budget. So our expenditures are increasing, and we're having to eat into our contingency. And the, the minimum threshold, is that two percent? The, by the law, we are to set aside two percent contingency. As you said, the State Board of Education, although recommends five and a half, five percent. So we, we try to abide by the, what the State Board of Education recommends. So what is concerning to me is that I just received my new evaluation on my property taxes. It went up twenty-three percent. The problem is, is we don't get that money here in our district because of the way the state SEEK formula works. Almost all of that will end up going back to the state. So we need to, I'm going to get on my bandwagon here. We need to be advocating and legis, to our state legislators, the SEEK formula hurts us in Boone County. Everything that we're paying in property taxes in the increase is taken away from us. So every year, we are paying back to the state more than what we get, and we have to keep reducing our expenditures and finding places to make cuts and putting things off. And it's, in my opinion, just not right. And so we need everybody to be reaching out to our state legislators. Unfortunately, the sad part is, the SEEK formula is not going to change. There's too much, there is a large contingency down in Frankfurt that that formula is not going to change. But we need to advocate to our state legislators to get us funding through different mechanisms. For instance, our ELL population is growing quite large. We're almost up to, is it, is it ten or twenty percent? We're up to almost two thousand students out of our twenty thousand students. We only receive three hundred and forty-five extra dollars a year to support our ELL students. That's a line item they could be helping us with. So, yes, I'm on my bandwagon on this because it very much upsets me that we are not getting the funding that we need for our students and our staff back from the state. Okay, off my bandwagon.
Madam Chair, if I could just interject, excuse me there, just one small thing. A four percent increase was mentioned earlier, I just want to clarify.
Yes, yes, clarify that.
That's a four percent increase in revenues, not a four percent increase in the tax rate.
Correct.
So it's a very, very subtle difference. We only have so many options when the Board chooses their tax rate.
Correct. And the last time we did that, it actually ended up lowering the tax rate because our tax base is increasing so much. So, okay, is there any further discussion on the tentative budget?
Yeah, question. For the layperson looking at this tentative budget, if you scroll to, basically the last page, page fifty-four, for the last fiscal year, if I'm reading that correctly, I would say that we have a fifty-seven million dollar surplus. But I don't, I don't think that that accurately reflects the situation, or does it?
No, that does not. That, hold on a minute, I'm going to pull, I should have had that. That includes some restricted and designated amounts. We have to set aside funds such as the amount we pay out for sick leave when people, when they retire, so it will include that. That is reflecting, you know, what is on our financial statements from, in an accrual basis, so it does include every aspect of fund balance.
And when we say two percent for contingency, two percent of what number?
Okay, two, it's two percent of budgeted expenditures. And I want to add one more thing. When we're at the tentative budget level, when we're establishing the beginning balance, we're establishing the balance that's available for spending. So it would not include some of those amounts that are set aside, even though in the, you know, the way the report works in our system, it will pull that full number, but we are only able to budget what we, the cash, basically, that we have available to spend. So that's why that number looks so different. And when you see that number in the following year's budget, you'll see that be different because it will start including any of those restricted amounts.
I've only sat on this board for, I don't know, a year and a half or so. What, what normally does Boone County set aside for contingency?
Five percent.
So we normally set aside three extra percent?
Well, we're at three and a half right now, so it, it would be an extra, extra one and a half percent.
Okay, and we generally use that for buildings, new schools that? That's a separate account, okay. So that contingency fund over the years has been a little higher than the state minimum?
It's, it's a little higher than the law requires, but it's at the five percent that the State Board of Education recommends.
They recommend five percent.
And that is, that is set aside for unforeseen events.
Sure.
And unforeseen, unanticipated expenditures. So to be fiscally responsible, we've always used the five percent. And also, in our experience in dealing with the SEEK formula, you know, we want to make sure we're on, on sound footing, you know, if we were experiencing what we've been experiencing the last three years with SEEK, you know, that we want to make sure we're not going to go into a deficit situation if we have to deal with those, those type of issues.
Well, I, I agree with you, Ms. Pyle, that there are some deficits from Frankfurt. I'm, I don't think that our current crop of legislators are going to be of any help, to be quite honest with you. They have shown time and time again that they, that we're going to rely, in other words, we need to rely on Boone County and do things on the dime that we have available to us, I think, was, was what you guys were saying. We need to budget for the cash available, the local situation here in Boone County going forward. And I think that that is a larger discussion, but I think you're right that especially with our growing population of diverse needs, I wish Frankfurt cared more about that population. They need to, that's our future citizens, and I wish they did pay more attention to our diverse set of schools here in Boone County, but I don't hold out much hope for that. So we need to move forward based on what we can do here in Boone County and align our budget, knowing that we're going to get the minimum amount of help from our legislators.
If I can add one more thing, last month, I reported that our, they put almost an extra million dollars in our SEEK formula, and it was due to a law that was passed quite a number of years ago, but it was based, a lot of it was based on our advocacy for some changes in the SEEK formula. And the reason why that happened is when Fort Knox merged with Hardin County. So they were experiencing some of the same issues that, that we were experiencing, and they passed this law. The problem is, we don't know when we're going to get funds like that. So that was, that was a piece of good news that we received last month, you know, reducing that SEEK loss by a million dollars. We just can't guess when we're, if and when we're going to get that again, because the law states that if there are state funds left over, then they will allocate it out in that way. So that, that's just one thing they did in trying to deal with the issues with the formula. That brought us a million dollars last year. It brought us about two or three hundred thousand the year before.
A working budget of two hundred and seventy.
Right. And we had a SEEK loss of, I can't remember exactly, three million. So it, it brought back about a million.
As, as well as we do here in this county, and we do do well, this is a great county to live in, and we have a lot of upside. We have tons of jobs. We have booming multinational corporations located here, and I feel fortunate to live in Boone County. The SEEK formula, unfortunately, it works against you if you're successful.
Yes, I've said that. If you're prosperous, if you're successful, you will be hurt by the SEEK formula. When there's a downturn in the economy, the SEEK formula will work well for you, and that's what happened for us. It worked well enough for us in sometime around two thousand eight, up to about three, four years ago, when, when our housing starts were not quite as high as they were in the eighties, nineties, you know, up, up into the two thousands. So that, that is absolutely correct. And there was a study, I don't know if you're familiar with it, that was done by the University of Louisville, and it showed that the three huge metropolitan areas, you know, Fayette, Lexington, Louisville, and Northern Kentucky, it, it showed how much funds they were sending to Frankfurt and how much they were getting back, and Northern Kentucky was short, shortchanged more than any. I don't know if they've updated a study like that recently.
Yeah, and, and again, I just, we have twenty thousand students with Celest County.
We're at nineteen something.
Right, right around twenty, and then how, and then we're one of the largest employers in Northern Kentucky. Is that correct, still? The vast majority of citizens in Boone County are absolutely committed to public education. That is unwavering. It's twenty thousand students and their families committed to public education. This Board needs to continue to make sure that we're committed to perfect, awesome schools and the people that work for those schools. And we need to do that inside of Boone County with absolutely no help from our state legislators, unfortunately.
Okay, do we have any further discussions? It's been pretty rich, so. Good? Okay, well, seeing there's no further discussion, we'll move forward with a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? None opposed, motion passes, all in favor. We'll move forward with Agenda Item nine, Recommended Action New Business, Item B. Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I recommend the Board to approve the Recommended Action New Business, Item B, House Bill 678 Resolution.
Do I have a motion to approve the New Business, Item B, House Bill 678 Resolution as recommended? Mr. Collins, second? Mr. Parks? Do we, Mr. Turner, do you have any discussion?
Yes, I will ask Mr. McCarter or Mrs. Best to please comment on this. This was a, a new law in place this year, and I will compliment Ed Massey, our former Board member here and also State Representative, where he really listened to all the districts, not just ours, but all the districts in, in Kentucky about the, the difficulties in getting construction projects through the approval process at the Kentucky Department of Education in, in, in an efficient way without delays to those projects.
And you are correct, Mr. Turner. It is a process to streamline the construction process, eliminate red tape, and to allow districts to move forward and not lagging behind in the construction projects. Myself, Linda, Kim, and Dan were all part of a webinar last Thursday, I believe, a state webinar explaining this process. It has not totally begun yet, but they answered a lot of different questions. At this point, I believe, they said there are fifty-eight other districts in the state that have signed on or passed this resolution to move forward, and then we are going to be getting more information in the weeks to come to utilize this process. So that's really all the information that I have at this time. They did say that they would be putting together some information for Boards of Education as well, a webinar that you could participate in. I have not been privy to that information or sent that information yet at this time.
So, I'm sorry, I was going to say, essentially, just to streamline the process for approvals, which is incredibly important right now with inflation. As, as the longer we have to wait for projects and getting bids and getting all that in place, prices are continuing to rise, and that just eats into our construction budget.
I think I did see something come out with a webinar from KSBA, because I think I signed up for that. Okay, do we have any other further questions or discussion?
Didn't we approve a similar process with the multiple contract approval process?
It was for contract approvals, but this is specifically for construction that has been pretty well state regulated, like we had to keep sending things down to state for approval, go through KDE. They were short-staffed, which just kept waiving things.
So I'm, I'm in the Board Agenda, says Board Resolution, electing to opt-in to our House Bill 678, and it seems to be that the document that's in there is our process. Am I looking at the wrong document? Where we, contracts exceeding thirty thousand, Superintendent approval, principal approval?
That's not it. Now, essentially, what is on the agenda is just a resolution that we, as a school Board and a school district, will follow House Bill 678.
I got you.
And streamlining and, essentially going through some of the KDE processes but not having to wait for the replies.
It opened two pages when I clicked on that.
Oh!
Yeah, it opened two pages, our, our process and then there, and then, I got it. All right, fair enough, thank you.
That explains it. Okay, any further questions or discussion? Okay, being that there's none, we'll move forward with a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? None? All, motion passes, all in favor. We will move forward to Agenda Item nine, Recommended Action New Business, Item B. Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I recommend the Board to approve the Recommended Action New Business, Item B, House Bill 678
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I recommend the board to approve the recommended action new business item C, the Ignite Institute Local Area Vocational Education Center Grant as presented.
Hey, do I have a motion to approve the new business item agenda Institute Local Area Vocational Education Center Grant? That was a mouthful, as recommended. Do I have a motion? Or give it to Mr. Parks that time, second? Mr. Collins? Okay, um, Mr. Turner, do you have any additional information?
Yes, just a, a little bit of information. We applied for a grant last school year, uh, with the Kentucky Department of Education to make some improvements, to renovate a few areas of the Ignite Institute on their second floor level, to have some, uh, some better classroom space in some undeveloped areas there, and also to include some science labs uh, within that space, which they currently have limited space for that, or limited access to that. Um, Dr. Detwiler, I don't know if you and your team have any other additional information you would want to provide, but we applied for a grant last year. We were turned down with the grant. Um, I give the credit to our local legislators and others around the state. They did include, all of the districts that applied for those grants last year, they did place them in the budget and fund them this year.
Do we have any discussion or questions?
Yes, thank you to Representative Massey for um, continuing to advocate for our local area vocational center, Ignite. And um, also I know you did a lot of work advocating for, um, this particular initiative and uh, House Bill one, and so I appreciate your efforts as well. Ignite is um, a fantastic place, and it'll continue to serve many, many students going forward in both of our counties here in Northern Kentucky, and the other schools it participates in.
Anything, any further? Okay, being that there's no further discussion, we'll move forward with a vote. All in favor say aye? Aye? Any opposed? Being none opposed, motion passes, all in favor. We'll move forward with agenda item nine, recommended action new business, item D, Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I recommend the board to approve the recommended action new business item D, uh, the MDC Land Incorporated Preschool Achievement Center Lease for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year as presented.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the new business item D, MDC Land Inc. Preschool Achievement Center Lease for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year as recommended? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Parks, do I have a second? Mr. Collins? Do we have any discussion or questions? Or, Mr. Turner, do you have additional information?
Yeah, thank you. I'll, I'll turn it over to Dr. Detwiler, and let him, uh, discuss a little bit about, uh, our plans with, with this specific lease and some of our planning processes for the future.
Don't have to be bused to other schools in the district, but any further planning will be through our strategic planning, our five-year strategic planning. Um, as, as Ms. Powell said earlier, this is another one of those unfunded mandates. Preschool is not funded to the student. We have these general funds. So we have some really, some really good long-term planning to do through the strategic plan, um, to determine where this is all going to go.
Thank you, Dr. Detwiler.
Any further questions or discussion?
There was some discussion last year, about a long-term solution to the preschool building. Has there been any difference in that so far? I mean, I know at one time we tried to buy the building, and the owner wouldn't sell the building to us, and then there was some discussion about possibly having a more long-term situation.
I can comment on that a little bit, uh, Mr. Parks. There have been many discussions, um, some of them behind closed doors on some property areas and some possibilities, working with several municipalities here within Boone County to partner with them. There's nothing officially to report on that, but there are some ongoing conversations and discussions on moving that forward, and we are seeing some interest with that, and, and I'm, I'm pleased to share that, uh, we, I think we have the opportunity to be able to move quickly, but we just gotta sketch out our plans and then really commit to what we're wanting to have for the next five years, moving forward.
I'll just, I'll just say that, um, that the preschool, um, is another one of my favorite places, uh, to go. Um, there are people in that facility doing just immensely fantastic work with kids that speak multiple languages and are three and four years old. Um, it's, it's a, uh, like, just a magical place, magical stuff goes on in there. It's some of the most important work a district can do, is preschool or extremely early childhood education. And if I were, and I'm not, a member of a municipality board, I would be looking to help Boone County schools figure out a long-term solution to attract a preschool in my municipality, because that's the kind of thing that keeps residents in your municipality. Um, I know where I live, you have to pay a fortune, um, to have preschool services, and not everybody has access to that, so they end up in our elementary schools, a shade behind where they should be, and it makes, um, that, that experience a little bit more difficult. So I would encourage, um, our partners around Boone County to help us, to talk to Mr. Turner and everybody else involved, to try to figure out a long-term solution, because I think everyone on this board is committed to preschool and early childhood education. I want to speak for them. Um, I know I am, and we need to figure that out. It is so important, um, as far as education goes. It makes graduation rate higher, it makes high school experience better, it makes middle school experience better, it makes everything work a little bit more smooth, and especially in our neighborhoods. Uh, so I'm in favor of the lease, obviously.
Okay, any other further discussion or questions? Seeing that there being none, we'll move forward with a vote. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Seeing that there's none, motion passes, all in favor. We'll move forward with agenda item nine, recommended action new business, item E, Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Chairperson. I recommend the board to approve the recommended action new business item E, gifted and talented consultant, new position and job description as presented.
Do I have a motion to approve the new business item E, gifted and talented consultant, new position and job description as recommended? Mr. Collins, second? Second, Mr. Parks? Do we have any, uh, Mr. Turner, do you have?
Yes, thank you. Um, yes, we'll have a few additional comments. I'll ask, uh, Dr. Watson if she would please, uh, speak, but this item's been before the Budget Committee, um, and also it's been before Esser Task Force working through, uh, uh, through those grants, as we were earlier mentioned, so, Dr. Watson, if you would, give us a little, a few more details.
With our Esser Committee, we, um, had a spot for a DEI, Diversity Equity and Inclusion Coordinator, Director, and we had that as a placeholder. And then through some conversation at the district level with Cabinet, and with Teaching and Learning, we just decided we were not quite ready to pursue that as that position originally entailed. Instead, what we wanted to do was figure out how we could better serve another population of students that are way underrepresented in our district, which is our identified gifted and talented students, as well as our, our proportion of students who are not identified as gifted and talented from some of our elementary schools that could be, if we had a person who was really helping teachers to identify strengths and talents in students at a very young age. So the consultant, we have one coordinator in our district for almost two thousand identified gifted students, between, uh, students that are identified formally or through the talent development model, model in kindergarten through fourth grade. Um, so this person would help with curriculum development, um, with working with teachers, helping with the compliance side of the identification and evaluation processes, being a partner with parents and families, uh, so that we can move that service forward, uh, over the next five years. So this is step one of a five-year plan, uh, which would involve more strategic work um, and research on what we can do to better prepare elementary students, uh, for, uh, advancing their learning. So that's, that's the why behind it. That's how we're funding it, is through Esser. I agree with Mr. Turner. It went to Esser Committee, it went to Budget Committee, and it went through Teaching and Learning as part of a strategic move going forward. Any questions?
Is this an additional position, or is this a re-descript, re-defining of current position?
It would be an additional position as a consultant, kind of like what we have a reading consultant, we have a, a math consultant. So again, it would be for these two years while we're trying to figure out this new organizational chart that matches our new strategic plan. This is kind of moving forward in how we're serving underserved populations. Uh, so because we have the funding there, it's kind of pu- putting action to, to the plan with the, the equity piece, um, and really focusing on a talent development model. So it's based on research. We're modeling it after about both what Oldham County is doing, as well as, um, some Chicago schools. So we've got a very strategic plan on how that's gonna look, but we need this person to help with this. Another piece of data I'll share is seventy-one percent of our parents and students' perception data regarding their services for gifted and talented was percept- their perception is negative, because we just don't have a district our size with one coordinator, and really not a lot of professional learning opportunities for our teachers. You know, if you compare our model to Warren, to Jefferson, even to Fort Thomas, we don't have the, the staff allocated to that population of students that, that we should. So that's part of, again, the strategic plan to get there.
Paid for through ARP-ESR?
Yes, right.
Yes, just Mr. Parks, I would just, just further on that point. It is being paid through ARP-ESR for two years. So there's a decision point at that time on whether to continue that and if find funding in the budget to do that, or reduce that position.
Okay, any additional questions or discussion?
I feel like, uh, this position is, is critical. Uh, there are, there's a lot of talent in, in, uh, the student body or the, uh, student, in the student population here in Boone County. However, if those, uh, students aren't identified and aren't given the opportunities to grow and develop, uh, they will, uh, miss out on opportunities, and, uh, the whole, whole purpose for the district is to provide those opportunities and, and the, the best education possible. So I feel like, uh, bringing in a coordinator who's going to oversee and provide a little bit more, uh, stability and oversight to the, the program itself is really just gonna enhance the services that the district can provide, so I, I feel like it's a, it's a good opportunity.
Anything else? Okay, seeing that there's no further discussion, we'll move forward with a vote. All in favor say aye? Aye? Any opposed? Seeing that there's none, motion passes, all in favor. Okay, we'll move forward with agenda item nine, recommended action new business, item F, Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I recommend the board to approve the recommended action new business item F, finding to modify the district facility plan to add additional classrooms to Camperance Middle School as presented.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the new business item F, finding to modify district facility plan to add additional classrooms to Camperance Middle School as recommended? Mr. Parks, second? Mr. Collins? Uh, Mr. Turner?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is a, uh, our facilities committee will be tasked for this finding, so essentially the board is giving permission for the facilities committee to meet, so that they can look at all of the variables, all the data regarding Camperance Middle School, the other items that we have on our facilities, uh, plan now, and to give that group the opportunity to, uh, readjust what's in that plan based on the information they see with classroom space and student numbers at Camperance.
Okay, is there any additional discussion or questions? Okay, um, if I seem to recall, Mr. McCarter, the composition of the facilities committee, that's dictated by state, isn't that? By, um, state laws, am I right? Yeah, state laws.
Correct.
Okay, seeing that there's no additional questions or discussion, we'll move forward with a vote. All in favor, please say aye? Aye? Any opposed? None? Uh, motion passes, all in favor. Okay. Okay, we will move forward with agenda item nine, recommended action new business, item G, Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I recommend the board to approve the recommended action new business item G, the District Technology Plan two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three as presented.
Do I have a motion to approve new business item G? District Technology Plan for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three as presented? Mr. Collins, second? Mr. Parks? Mr. Turner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think we have Mary Ann Rankin here with, evening. I'm not sure if she wants to say anything regarding, um, this, uh, new, uh, District Technology Plan. Would you like to give us just a very brief update?
Four or five times during the school year, talk about the contents of the plan. Um, this is really a, a plan that we pull from multiple documents. We not only plan for one year, we have plans that are out four and five years, and so we just kind of pull each year out, talk about devices, instructional tools, um, and, um, training for teachers, all of those different things you see in the plan. If you have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Any part of the plan gonna allow my daughter to stop forgetting her Chromebook charger?
Okay, any other further questions or discussion? No? Seeing that there's none, we'll move forward with a vote. All in favor, please say aye? Aye? Any opposed? Seeing that there's none, motion passes, all in favor. We will move forward with agenda item nine, recommended action new business, item H, Mr. Turner.
Thank you again, Madam Chairperson. I recommend the board to approve the recommended action new business item H, the emergency work to replace, repair the chiller at Ryle High School with the train company as presented.
Do I have a motion to approve the new business item H, emergency work to replace chiller at Ryle High School with train company as recommended? Mr. Collins, second? Mr. Parks? Um, any, Mr. Turner?
Oh, yes, thank you. Um, here recently, the, uh, chiller, the main air conditioning unit at Ryle High School, uh, failed, and, uh, our team, uh, quickly got into place. Uh, Dan Razor and his group really moved fast, uh, with the rest of the operations team to get some work in place in an emergency situation with that main chiller being down, where there's limited, um, air conditioning in a building with twenty-one hundred students and about a hundred and fifty faculty members with ninety-degree weather approaching. Uh, we declared an emergency and, and had the, them go ahead and move forward with some emergency repairs. Uh, Dan, really thank you for all your work on this. You did a fantastic job, you and your team, to get that done in a very quick time. Is there anything you'd like to add here?
Partnering with Train and, and the focus on the team, and Ms. Bestman's been partnering, and you all, I appreciate that. The work is complete and, 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 uh, and, and, uh, and it is anticipated, so it's, uh, it was very well done. We didn't wanna contend with what it could mean if we couldn't bring that chiller up, uh, given the, given the temperatures and given testing, so.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Mr. Razor. Any questions or discussion?
And, um, so this is one of those examples where, uh, that contingency fund comes into play. Yes, and so it, it really kind of speaks to, uh, the necessity to optimize it to, to the best of our abilities, uh, not just for, um, unforeseen issues associated with, uh, state funding, but things that crop up, because had it not gone in, uh, they would've been uncomfortable these last few days for sure. So, ve- very well done, Mr. Razor.
Anything else? Okay, seeing there's no further discussion, we'll move forward with a vote. All in favor, please say aye? Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, all in favor. We'll move forward to agenda item ten, Superintendent Report, Mr. Turner.
Thank you again, Madam Chairperson. Uh, want to take a few minutes to, uh, talk about a few items here from the recent past here, and also a quick update on, on a few items. Um, obviously, last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, and, uh, we wanted to make sure we celebrated and, and recognized and honored our teachers and all of our staff for the work they do every year, uh, and every day of the year, excuse me. You know, this year has been an extremely difficult year, and it's just required a lot of patience, a lot of and it's just required a lot of patience, a lot of perseverance from every one of our employees. Um, since August, everyone has worked extremely hard to provide the best instruction, the best care for all of our students and everyone's just been fantastic in doing everything they can to provide just a great value to our students. Um, and that's just through their work each and every day with students, no matter their job title and their description. They just work so hard and they demonstrate kindness. They demonstrate compassion and strength and resilience each and every day. I'm very thankful, very appreciative of all of our students, all of our teachers, all of our staff members for everything they do every day. And this has been a challenging year. You know, I recognize that work and I appreciate that work from each and every one of you. Uh, I hope you, everyone really understands the positive difference that you've made in the lives of kids, our students throughout this whole year. It's been fantastic. We're very blessed to have the people we have that work for us here in this school district and work to serve our children in the community. They do make a difference every single day. I'd also like to take a few minutes just to recognize Jody Hall. She's our special education director and she does not know this is coming. Mrs. Hall is fantastic as our special education director. Um, there is so much work and so much compliance activity within the special education world, so many documents, so much data, all the plans that you have to have in place. It's an enormous amount of work. Invariably, there's a few mistakes or a few errors or omissions in some of that work, even in the best of times. And it's not out of the ordinary for a district to, to receive a corrective action plan, meaning that we have, they pull some data and if there's a couple mistakes, we may have a corrective action plan that we have to, and we have to work through to make sure that we remove those mistakes and make sure that we're accurately doing everything for our students with special needs. So it's a, it's a, uh, it's a process, just a double-check process that this state has. We've had two corrective action plans put into place here in the last two years. And here recently, we've received word that both of those corrective action plans have been lifted and we've met all the needs for that, all within a, a year's time, maybe a little bit more than that. And that's simply amazing. That is just fantastic work. Some of those corrective action plans take multiple years, sometimes five or six years to get everything in place to get through that process of a corrective action plan. So I want to recognize Jody and her staff for just a phenomenal job of doing, being de, very dedicated and getting all that work taken care of with not just your own team, but all the teams of the people that work within the schools. Thank you for that work, Jody. That's fantastic. Next, I'll turn it over to Dr. Detwiler for, uh, his report, uh, for academics.
So tonight, just back to the new snapshot of our case data, um, information, you know, our subway journey and then followed up by Dr. Watson's.
Good evening. Um, everybody should have a little copy of, I'm just brief. It's just one piece of paper. Um, our case, um, assessments were given three times a year and it's all of our students K through, um, high school ju, algebra two and English two. And the data I, is reflected that I show you are for our accountable grade level. So it's third through eighth and our tenth graders because those students are part of our accountability model. And I wanted to point out our three benchmarks this year. This is the, all of our students, our third through eighth and our tenth graders, where their proficiency was in October and the case data, or the case assessments are based on our grade level standards for their grade. Um, we started the year in October at fifty percent proficient in reading and forty-three percent in math. In January, we were at fifty-five percent proficient in reading and forty-nine percent in math. And then our final case data that we just took at the end of March, we were fifty-four percent in reading and fifty percent in math. The blue line I showed you is our last pre-pandemic, um, state test and that was the two thousand, or twenty-nineteen K-Preb. And at that point, pre-pandemic, our scores were fifty-nine point eight percent proficient in reading and a fifty-three point three percent in mathematics. So our March data shows that we've almost hit our pre-pandemic, um, scores, which I think would be a success for these past two years of what we've gone through, that we're on the bounce back and to bounce up with our students. And our students right now are currently have taken, are still taking our state assessment and will have those results in the fall. Questions?
Krista, is it fair to say that we're seeing growth from our students, that we feel like we're in a good spot after these last two years?
I think we're seeing growth and being in school has a so-called quote-unquote "normal" year this year. I think has been a benefit to our students from our fall to where we are now. Um, the excitement level, I think I've had some feedback from our schools that they said, you know, this, this case assessments are very rigorous and long and that the feedback of, I've heard from some students saying that, wow, our test we took, it really wasn't as hard as our case assessments. So, um, hopefully we know that rigor and being intentional with our students and using data to help students move forward will have the result of growth in our data when we see the fall.
Thank you.
So that, the case data, do the students see that data when they take the tests?
Yeah, this, the data goes top, bottom or bottom up, I guess. Um, each school, they receive their data, grade level data, teachers', individual, student data. And then we do have parent reports that go along with that. So up to, and each school handles that differently of how they communicate things out with students and families.
I just didn't know if the students could see what their growth has been too individually.
Yes, they have the opportunity of the schools that show that data, yeah.
Good.
So just, um, at, at, uh, first class, I mean, it, this data really kind of illustrates the, the commitment to the, the district, um, uh, the commitment of the district, uh, certainly the, the educators in the building, the leadership in the building and, um, most importantly, the resilience of the students to, um, see these, see this growth from October to, uh, March and, and essentially cutting, uh, the, that loss, if you will, uh, essentially in half in less than a year under some very challenging circumstances. So I, I think, um, that recognition should, should definitely be, uh, magni, um, magnified. Yeah, celebrated for sure.
Also in the data, our case data doesn't measure their writing, their constructive responses and the K-Prep does. Um, so I know we've worked hard on what students, how they're communicating their understanding. So I think that will be a benefit. And knowing that our state data will not be comparable to previous years because our past couple of years, we really, the test has changed and last year, we didn't have the accountability. At this case, that will be very valuable to us to really know where, how we did on the state assessment and then measure ourselves and how do we go forward.
And I can certainly attest, um, uh, my two that are in the district have, have benefited from being in the buildings. Uh, it's, it's night and day. There, there's no comparison. So again, we, we certainly want to celebrate these accomplishments and look forward to continuing to, uh, move forward.
Thank you, Krista. Appreciate it.
All right. Good evening again. I'll just, I'll be very brief. This is the last year that we have funding set aside for that massive summer school, summer bridge program, whatever you want to call it, um, where we provide food service, services, we provide transportation, we have, uh, classified and certified staff who are coming in at that higher rate of pay, specifically certified staff, um, to work through kind of, and this was part of our ESER plan. So, um, with that said, we have four weeks of instruction that will begin right after Memorial Day. So it begins that May thirty-first. It, uh, extends through June twenty-third. Uh, some feedback we got from schools last year was a recommendation for both families and from teachers that we make it a four-day week instead of a five-day week, um, allowing for a three-day weekend just because people were tired and need some family time. And so we, we recognize that. Um, and right now is when invitations are going out to families and students, inviting them to the program. Um, I've gotten several, uh, Google Docs today from principals that have their lists already completed. You know, so we expect a, a large turnout, um, hundreds of students to be part of this program in the summer. Um, so we're excited about it. We're finalizing the curriculum and professional learning for teachers who have signed up to be tutors. HR has been a great partner with us, making sure we get enough, uh, employees uh, to serve for us this summer. Um, so we're well on our way. Any questions about summer school?
I don't know. Did you give us any data from the summer school from last year, like the effect?
Yeah, the, the, well, probably what the best indicator would have been STAR. So the beginning of the year STAR or last year STAR. So I could, Linda Black, maybe we can look and see and pull that. I, I don't think I did share that with you, but I'm happy to. Um, we identified students that fell in the bottom twenty-five percent based on STAR. That's how we identified K-eight and then high school, of course, has both, um, their cert and credit recovery for courses. Graduation is critical. So we got to get those courses, uh, complete for high school. So, um, so we've identified those students and that's how we, we use STAR again, um, as a kind of culminating assessment to see how did we do. Um, and we have very scripted, very research-based programs that we're using uh, to drive that remediation. So. Any other questions?
You, you said this is the last year that it's funded?
Yes.
And, and because there's two, two sources of funding, there's one for the food, right?
And then there's one for, um, yeah, the program itself, is that correct?
Correct. This is still part of the ESER COVID recovery, uh, big bucket of money.
Okay. What, what is the cost?
Overall, gosh, I'd have to look back at my spreadsheet. I can look over there and tell you in a couple of minutes because we have a line item budgeted for it. But by the time, we, we have certain line items for transportation, for, uh, food service, for staffing, for curriculum. So I'll, I could give you a ballpark, um, after I take a look at it.
No worries.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be interesting to know the data from the first year of it, the second year, the cost of it. Is that something we look at continuing that has been really effective or not?
Right.
I, from my conversations with families, they really appreciated the extra services and I, and I, I think we did. Um, there was some extra incentive for our staff to work those programs, um, also, is that correct?
Yes.
And that's continuing this summer?
Correct.
Those incentives for the staff?
Mm-hmm. That higher rate of pay for certified. Classified, we did not because of the bus drivers getting that two-dollar rate after summer school last year. Um, and that wasn't in the, in the budget. Primarily, we have, um, you know, it's mostly run by the teachers. So that's, that's kind of where we are with that. But we're still working on, you know, making sure we have enough personnel.
So you are doing four days?
Correct.
Okay.
Four days, not, not five days. That, that just.
Yeah. They want that day off.
I get that, yeah.
Four days is pretty traditional for summer school.
It is.
Yeah.
For that extra day.
Right.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to have a operations report. I'll go to, uh, Mr. McCarter.
I think, um, I wanted to invite Dan Razor to the mic to give us a brief update of summer projects that we're going to be doing. Dan has put together a very extensive list that he can provide to all of you if you would like to look at that. Um, and he'll, he'll email that to you. And I do want to compliment Dan and his group. Um, they're vital to our district um, for emergencies that just happened, you know, just a week ago at Ryle High School. But that's typically what they do. They react to things and they get things done. And people don't even realize the things that they do. It's all behind the scenes. So I really appreciate all your work and your efforts and the mic is yours to give a brief update.
Thanks.
Appreciate y'all.
Take some time to give a quick update. I will be brief and as Mr. McCarter said, I do have a really extensive Google Doc that I can share with you that has much greater details of these projects. Be happy to, to share that link with you too. Uh, so just a quick update on, on construction capital projects and facility management work scheduled for the summer and kind of ongoing now too, kind of in some different buckets. Right now, we've got projects that are in progress, near completion, uh, that are within their period of corrections, their one-year period of corrections, kind of their warranty period, or we're on punch list. Uh, you've got Steeplechase Elementary School, the Boone County High School Phase One addition and auditorium, the High School turf fields, uh, rise renovations here, uh, the Urpenbeck roof, the painted roof section from last year. Uh, last year's paving still has a few items that have buttoned up and last year's concrete project. So there's a few items left on their punch list. Uh, in progress, we've got two big construction projects in progress, R.A. Jones and, uh, Boone County High School Phase Two, which is the renovation there. Uh, as far as pending, and some of these are even pending your own bid approval or we're on your agenda today. Um, grade middle school cooling tower, Urpenbeck has another roofing replacement, HVAC controls at Ockham and Middle in New Haven. Uh, you've got gym LED lighting replacements and retrofits at all the middle schools that don't have those. Uh, Ryle High School has, uh, a flooring upgrade and some exterior LED lighting. I've got paving this summer for seventeen different schools or buildings. Uh, Urpenbeck has a kitchen piping replacement. Uh, Ryle has a pole vault project. We've got gym floors at all the high schools plus three elementary schools. Uh, we've got a geothermal well field repair actually on this campus. Um, and then other work, we usually do as a facility management team about twenty-five hundred, uh, twenty-five hundred work orders in, in the summer in that nine or ten-week period. It's, it's our busy time. It's our ramp-up time. And I anticipate we'll do that again, uh, given what we've, what we've seen and what we've got in the queue. We also do some assisting, uh, with building custodians in the buildings as they prepare and work on, especially in construction projects. They're moving furniture in and out. They're trying to get things ready. So we, we, we assist and provide the assistance, uh, there as we can and certainly staffing, just like every other department staffing is an issue. So, uh, we're at, actually, we're at about seventy percent staff right now. Uh, but we've not seen a downturn in, uh, in production nor in, in response time, which, uh, we're very proud of. And then we do a, I won't give you the extensive list of inspections, testing and preventive maintenance that go on in the summer, but as you can imagine, it's, it's extensive. And again, I can send you that Google Doc and, and just want to recognize Ms. Best, what a fantastic job she's done this year in, in, uh, in, in our shared work with, with these projects and in construction. It's, uh, it's, it's been a seamless transition and she's done fantastic work. So any questions that I can answer?
Dan, I just want to thank you for your work, first of all, but also just, uh, making do with less with, uh, making sure that everything's getting taken care of on time and not being behind on the work with some short staffing. That's, that's just very, very impressive. Thank you for that.
I appreciate that. It's, it's, it's been tough. I won't lie. It, it's, it's tough. It's tough in the market right now. Everyone's feeling it. So, uh, but I've got a, I've got an incredible team. I, I can't say enough about how proud I am of that team. So. Any other questions? All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I want to take just a couple of minutes of, of the board's time and, and, and our guests here as well just to talk a little bit. We were talking about the budget earlier and I think it's important to, uh, to understand a few key things about our school district budget, any school district budget. It's very different than any other budget uh, in that way. It's really made up of three parts, state funding, federal funding, which are usually grants and then local tax dollars. That's, that's the income that we get. And the SEEK formula was mentioned here earlier. Um, and that creates a difficulty for us, uh, within our county just because of our property values and the rising property values. You know, we, uh, we essentially, this past year and, and, and moving into next year, we're predicted to lose eight hundred thousand dollars just in that, that, that calculation with the SEEK formula. Um, moving from, we receive about four, we received about forty-seven point seven million last year for SEEK. We're projected to get less, that's seven hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars less, forty-six point nine million next year. So that's some of the numbers that our, our board members were talking about specific to that. If you look at that per pupil, that's about, uh, a difference of about, uh, two, two thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars to two thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars. So about, not quite, uh, just a, a few dollars per pupil, but that adds up when you have twenty thousand pupils. You know, so in general, we have more students, but we receive less SEEK, uh, less funding from the state. We are actually third from the bottom in SEEK funding overall of all the districts in Kentucky. Uh, that formula, that's very complicated. It takes lots of things into account. It takes into account the property values. Um, and, and we know ours are rising and that's just not a good thing for state funding because the more property values rise, the less we receive as a school district. And therefore, our local taxpayers then bear the burden of that, that piece. Um, you know, we, we talked about, um, what that looks like just a little bit earlier. House Bill One, which was passed this year, does give us a hundred ish, a hundred dollars additionally in SEEK, um, per pupil with that, with that calculation. That does provide some funding for the district, but it gets washed out in the rest of the calculation with the rising property values unfortunately. So it does give us a little bit extra money, but it's already working from a deficit. And that's the same thing for transportation. They did fund transportation a little bit more this year and we're appreciative of that. But we just need to understand what that means because that funding runs through the same SEEK formula. Uh, sa, uh, transportation next year, we're estimating thirteen million dollars overall to spend on transportation. With SEEK, with what they gave us, we're going to get three point five million dollars to pay for thirteen million dollars. So we have to make up the difference for that within our budget. So that's some of the consternation that you're hearing from our board members on trying to work through the budget and trying to manage things moving forward. Um, and unfortunately, we're dealing with the same situations that all of our families, all of our individuals are dealing with, with inflation, um, difficult times at work, all of those things that our families and our individuals deal with, we deal with that in, at a large scale with, just with our school system. You know, we do have short-term obligations and long-term obligations, you know, and we have to consider the economy, probably there's property tax rates, all the state budgets and their funding, available bonding capacity because we have to make sure that we have that capacity set aside, which is required by law for us for building projects. And we have to regularly pay those bonds and their interest on those bonds. And we cannot become close to, to, to having an issue with our bond payments and it affect our bond rating, which will then increase our costs later on. You know, we're in the midst of salary negotiations right now with our, with our association and both parties are, were agreed to keep all that confidential. So those conversations are ongoing. We're working through that process. So those conversations are ongoing, we're working through that process. We expect to give our employees a raise, both sides we do. And we're working to make that happen and we'll do that as best as we possibly can for all of our employees. But we value our employees and we want to make sure we compensate our employees. But we have to do that within the confines of our budget. You know, there was some information going around about state superintendents and requests to legislators about a raise with employees. And there are some requests like that. State superintendents ask the state not to put in a specific raise for school district employees. And the reason being, they do their funding in a two-year biennium. So they'll fund it for two years. But if they don't fund it in year two, then all the school districts in the state have a choice. We have to eat that 2% or whatever that raise may have been as a school district or we have to simply reduce staff or reduce the raise. So it's not good for them to mandate a raise in that way for school districts. That's been an unfunded mandate. They've done that in the past and it's been very painful for school districts all around the state. But we want them to put money in the budget that we can use to give a raise. They did put money in the budget for several things, but not specifically for a raise and not a lot of room in other areas. So we are going to work to do our very best to make sure we can pay as much as we possibly pay to our employees. But again, that just that unfunded mandate that happens with some of those issues creates major headaches for us. One final thing here, some state legislators around and have stated that there's, they've included enough money to give districts and teachers an 8% raise. And as I've just explained, every school district has a very different situation in their financial matters and how their makeup is, their property tax values, their tax rates, how much they get from different sources, how much they get from SEEK, which is based on all sorts of factors with students and the makeup of our students. And so it's just a very complicated matter when working through state funding and trying to make sure that we do everything we can to take care of our district finances, to look to the future, but also take care of our people and do what we can for our people. Because we're a people-serving business and we know that our staff and our teachers, our bus drivers, all of our people do a phenomenal job and they work extremely hard. And they all have a great impact on our kids and we really appreciate that. Sorry for me to go on, I just wanted to share a little bit of information on that and some of the struggles within the budget. I think some of that stuff is just not known publicly of how that works and some of the difficulties that we face as a school district. And it's not just here recently, it's been the last 20 years or so. Our district has struggled with these types of matters, trying to make sure we balance the budget, that we build new schools to manage growth. It's been a very, very big challenge over the years. And so we will do our absolute best for our people because we carry for our people and what we can pay them. But I can't go into any of the details as I said earlier, but I just wanted to share a little bit of the economic information. So I do have one or two last things after that. We have graduation coming up. Boone County High School is on the 26th at 7:00 PM. Connor High School, 7:00 PM on the 27th. Cooper High School, 10:00 AM on Saturday the 28th. And then Ryle High School, 3:00 PM on the 28th. The Rise Academy will be at Ballyshannon Middle School on June 2nd at 6:30 PM. And I want to, right now, just take a few minutes to thank all of our principals that are here with us tonight. I really appreciate your time and your effort. I know this is a very, very busy time for you with end-of-year activities and also end-of-year distress with students and everything going on at the very end. I really appreciate you being here tonight and appreciate the work that you do. Madam Chair, that's all I have. That concludes my superintendent's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. We'll move to item 11, information proposals and communications. Do we have any board member committee reports since the last meeting of the committees?
I'm just wanting to provide a, not even a brief update, but the COVID committee has continued to meet to monitor these increases in transmission as well as hospitalizations. And based on the preliminary evidence, it appears that we are seeing those increases. However, the degree of the sickness that for those individuals that are hospitalized has been, by all reports, less than was previously. So again, we'll continue to monitor, but I feel like it's certainly worth noting.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Anything, Mr. Parks? Okay. Have had since the last meeting, we had a teaching and learning committee where we had a lot of discussion around the relationship between the portrait of the graduate and the strategic plan, how those work together and developing the competencies, the matrices of that. And we had some great discussion in that meeting, number of stakeholders there. Mr. Reed gave some great input from the teacher perspective on to things. So that was a very good discussion. Today, Dr. Dotweiler and I attended the Fiesta Group Meeting, which is going to be a sub-organization of Learning Grove. And we had some fantastic conversations. Dr. Pichet was there also and gave a demonstration, did I say that right, Janine? Okay. A demonstration of the ILO Pro devices that we have in all of our schools, which the makeup of that meeting was the majority of the attendees were Spanish-speaking parents. And Dr. Dotweiler and Janine and I, Dr. Pichet and I were actually the minority in the room. And when we, Dr. Pichet demonstrated the ILO devices, I could, the mouths on the Spanish-speaking families just dropped. They were like, we have this capability. This is, I mean, they just were so impressed and we played with it and different things. So I think that's going to create a lot of buzz with our MLL families because the devices, I think it was 120 languages and different dialects and things. So very cool and thank you for going to that meeting today. Trying to think if I, I don't think I have anything else. I normally have a whole list, but it's been a busy day, so. Anybody have any other announcement? I know KSBA is doing a number of webinars. I think there is one the first week of June, that's the federal and state law update. That's on Thursday of Memorial Day week, I think, like 9 to 12 that day. So I know I did, I signed up for that one. I don't think there's, I can't think of anything else. Okay.
Yeah, I do have one.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm making sure you got it done. Just wanted to point out, we had the segment earlier in the meeting about school lunch, right? And that was a very moving segment. We do have a lot of students in our district that dealing with, you know, food scarcity, that kind of thing. And just want to say, and I think I've said this before, as a person that ate school lunch every Friday at New Haven for four years until COVID happened, I'm a fan of school lunch. Pizza crunchers are my favorite. Sad Mr. Novak left because he's mean and doesn't invite me over there every Friday. I'm kidding, he's not mean. I like Mr. Novak. But that service that public, another fantastic service that public education provides families and students is the food portion of our operation. And as a person that lives in a community that's full of cafeteria workers, and I know many of them personally, I still visit them at New Haven. I just want to say thank you for all the work that you do. And it is in operation daily at all the buildings to feed two meals a day to the students of Boone County. And that is another one of these vital functions that our district does. And then I just want to say something about the case data. The reason why we have what I consider pretty good numbers since the pandemic and even not much of a drop-off since the pandemic is because of our world-class educators here in Boone County. That is probably the single most important thing that that paper shows me is that the people that we have teaching our children are fantastic grade-A educators. And I hope that we can make sure that the district always points that out in a long-term fashion. Because I know we owe everyone that works for Boone County Schools, not just the educators, but the custodians, the bus drivers, the cafeteria workers, the speech pathologists, and everyone else, a huge debt of gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr.
I'm sorry, I do have one that I forgot. We have a robotics team in our district.
That's a big deal.
That won the world competition and they defeated another Northern Kentucky school to do it.
Yes.
So that's pretty phenomenal, two, the top two teams in Northern Kentucky. But just outstanding work by our students and our staff there at Ignite with that team. Congratulations to them.
Thank you. Okay, we will move forward with Agenda Item 12. But I'm going to refer over to Mary Ann because I don't believe we need a closed session. Okay, thank you. So we'll move forward with adjournments. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Mr. Collins, do I have a second?
I want to hang out. I'm kidding, motion.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Seeing none opposed, motion passes, all in favor. Those new items. New items.
I didn't see Gray's SRO. There was a couple missing, I feel like, yeah.
Okay. Are you ready? Okay, the call to order the Finance Corporation and the Boone County Board of Education in the May 12, 2022 meeting. We will move to item number two, audience of citizens, portion of the meeting. Seeing that there is none, we'll move forward to item number three, approval of minutes and financial statements, Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I recommend the board approve the minutes of the April 21, 2022 Corporation meeting and the financial statements as presented.
Do I have a motion to approve the Finance Corporation minutes of the April 21, 2022 and financial statements as recommended? Mr. Collins, second. Mr. Parks? Any discussion? No discussion, seeing there's no discussion, we'll move forward with a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none opposed, the motion passes, all in favor. We will move to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Mr. Parks, second. Mr. Collins. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None opposed, motion passes, all in favor. And we say goodnight.